I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. I move we approve the agenda with the following amendments. Additional certified and classified personnel actions were considered by your group, dash one. Revised Ed persistent lift trailer, number 4B. And remove I M J, dash two. There's been a motion to approve the agenda as suggested amendments, is there a second? Second by Mark, all those in favor please raise your hand. No, same sign, motion carries. Transmittable for small bits. entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. I move we approve the consent agenda. There's a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended, is there a second?
Seven.
Second by Tim, all those in favor please raise your hand. No, same sign. Motion carries. KJ? Are you ready? Already, we're so excited to hear from you. I just had to get to you as fast as I can. Please come on. Okay. You're all excited to always hear my budget updates. A little over a week ago, I'm sure it's no surprise, and you've already heard, the courts have deemed the latest legislation that was passed, we deemed that unconstitutional. So they sent it back to the state, basically back to the draw board, and suddenly still have until June 30th to come up with an approved budget. Otherwise, we might be looking at a potential shutdown July 1st. The legislators ended their session last week, I believe, and did not discuss, I believe they discussed if they didn't come to any resolutions on how they wanted to handle the problem. So, basically, I'm trying to give you an update of where we are at and kind of what we think could happen. Given what we do know. One of the things I want to talk about is the two pieces of the court case have to do with equalization and FTE. And the piece that basically just got rejected had to do with the equalization piece. So I kind of wanted to touch on that a little bit, so you can kind of understand all the pieces to that equalization. So what it is, if you think back to our old formula, not only did we have a component for how many students are actually sitting in desks every year, but some weightings that were kind of attributed to those students. Some students have greater needs than others, whether they be special education needs, whether they be ESL needs, various transportation needs. Not every student takes the same amount of dollars to educate. So when we look at that, not all students and communities are the same, meaning every group of students is different. And so one of the things that the old formula did, it allowed for some adjustments to be made to try and equalize that. One of the things that's not the same in each district is the assessed valuation and the dollars that can be generated at the local level. So they said, well, that's not really fair, how come one district who maybe has a very high assessed valuation and one mill will generate a whole lot more dollars than another, why could they maybe be able to provide their students with different things that another district can't? So what they tried to do was say, how can we make this a little bit more equal across the state? So the method that they had in place before had to do with the assessed valuation per pupil. And basically what they do is they take the assessed valuation for your district and they divide it by the number of students, the number of FTE that you have in your district. And then they rank all of those, 286 districts, what's your assessed valuation per pupil? And basically, they drew a line in the sand at the 81.2 percentile. If your district was above that, meaning you had a pretty high assessed valuation, you did not get any state aid. If you fell below that 81.2 percentile, then you got funding. And the further down on that scale you were, the more funding that you got from the state. So, one of the things that I want to look at, this is 2014-15 numbers. It was the last completed assessed valuation report that KSDE had done. So this is where I took this information from, but I just took a couple of districts. We're here in the little orange bar here. We've got some neighboring districts, and then I also took Topeka, Kansas City, and Shawnee Mission. I have currently ranked these in order from what one mill generates, and I'll walk through each of these columns. Basically, you have your FTE, and you can tell they don't go in order at all. The LOB and bond and interest assessed valuation, that's where they're taking their numbers from. Where is your assessed valuation, your total that you can basically tax from? And they've divided this by this and come up with the assessed valuation per pupil. Straplight that out a little bit further, one mill for each of these districts to tax their local taxpayers, one mill, that's what the dollars that can be generated. And so that is the order in which this schedule goes. And you kind of see where we fall on that. But another piece that I thought was kind of interesting, let's take that one step further. That one mill that's generated, how many dollars per student in that district? So how many dollars per student? And again, you can tell, it's not just how much does one mill generate, because now this is completely out of order. And it's because your number of students completely changes. So these variables move around quite rapidly. But if you look at where we're at, for every mill that we generate, we generate $48.13, $48.13. But if you look at what one mill does for Shawnee Mission, that's $113 per student. Or you can go, I believe Laken is the highest one on, nope, Holcomb, our neighbors, they generate $183 per student with every mill that they generate. Then I'm going to make even more numbers on this chart if I saw here. Let's take this first, this first piece is the exact same information we just looked at. But what I've added to it is how the state calculated where we fell in the 286 districts. Where were we at above or below that line, that 81.2 percentile? And if we look back at, so we'll take Garden City, the first column there, let's move over to the second column in green, that's where we were at in 2013 and 14. We were number 226 out of 286 districts. So that's where we were at as far as our assessed valuation in the hierarchy. We were on the lower end of that scale. And that is when we were generating 60.6% state aid in our LOB. So for every dollar that we wanted in our LOB, 60.6%, 60.6 cents came from state. The rest of it came from local taxpayers. And the way the old formula worked, every year, they would look back at where you fell on this scale, and they would adjust your additional state aid for the following year. So it was always based on where we were at last year, what we got funded for next year. But when block grants came into play in 2015-16, they froze us where we were. So they froze us at level 226 of the 286, of the 60.6% in our LOB. And actually, the percentile doesn't even matter, because they froze us with the actual amount that they were going to give us. It didn't matter that we increased our LOB $100,000, that fully had to come from local taxpayers. There were no matching funds on that from the state. Had we been able to look back, we would see that in, for 2015-16, we actually would have come in 248. So we actually would have gone a little further down on the scale, and we would have increased the amount of assistance we would have received from the state. It's a little over 61%, but we didn't get that because we were under block grants. What's interesting, though, is when you look at, the reason I bring all this to your attention is because as we read the papers and we listen to some of our neighboring districts, they all have a different dog in the fight, so to speak, whether or not some of this equalization aid matters to them. If we go back to Holcomb, who was number 22 on the scale, now 42. They are above that 81.2 percentile where they draw the line, they don't get any state aid. So the equalization piece doesn't matter as much to them when it comes to the court case. It matters to us, because every dollar we have to grow now has to come from local taxpayers with no additional assistance. And one of the reasons I wanted to look at this was as the courts are looking at the equalization piece, and as they kicked it back to the legislators, one of the things that they said to them was, we're not going to tell you how to do this, but we can tell you or at least point you in the right direction and say, if you were to go back and fully fund the equalization formula as it was previously written, we would say that was okay. You don't have to do it that way, but that is one way that would suffice the meeting and consultation. So with that in mind, we went back to the drawing board and said, okay, what if they did that? What would that mean for Garden City? So if we look at this, this is kind of the same formula we've been looking at for the last couple of weeks when we talked about the budget updates. This is the additional revenue that we would receive in Garden City next year versus this year. We already know we're going to have $371,000 in additional funding for the block grants. That was done in the block grant legislation, it's already, we're already expecting that. This increase in LOB state aid, $621,000. If you remember, at the end of 14-15, they cut us about $481,000 in LOB aid. In addition to that, because we've now gone a little further down the scale, we have an additional $200,000 that we would pick up, or it's not quite as a hundred and something, that we would pick up because we're a little further down the scale. So we would get more state aid. So the total of those two would mean we would get an additional $621,000 in LOB state aid. The increase in capital outlay state aid would be $293,000. And that's made up of, I apologize, I forget the numbers, I believe it's 150 about that they cut us at the end of 14-15, and the difference would be made up of, again, that sliding down the scale, increasing state aid. The decrease in virtual funding, that just had to do with the, we had expected in a little bit more of a ramp up on the virtual students when we did last year's budget, and it kind of flattened off, so we had to basically pull that back out, because we don't, we're not going to see that ramp up that we thought. And here's a little piece that I've added. In 2000, the current year we're in, our LOB was $16 million. We have the authority to go, you have the authority to take this up to 30% basically of our general fund. So we can grow that LOB to about $16,677,000, I believe is what it is. That would be 30% of our general fund budget. In the past, we have not maxed out our LOB, we have stayed below that. When they went to block grant funding, that actually hurt us. We were trying to be good stewards of taxpayer money, we were trying to not tax our taxpayers more than we had to. We had the ability to tax them more, and we chose not to. We chose to make cuts when we needed to find additional funding. Or sometimes we would make a combination of a little more money from local taxpayers and some cuts in between the two of those, we were able to make our budget work. By doing that, when they froze and put everything into place for block grants, we basically left money on the table from the state. Because had we been maxed out at 30%, our state aid would have been more than it was, and that would have been frozen in place. Does that kind of make sense with how we kind of left that money on the table? So in this scenario, what I've done is I said, let's say all these other things are true. We get all this additional money. We have about $56,000 additional that we can grow in our LOB, because we have $16 million, we can go to $16,677. So if we were to get all this additional funding, the 621 in the LOB, we'd have 60, excuse me, $56,000 additional that we could grow. And if we were to tax local taxpayers for that increase, it would be an increase of approximately 1.8 mills, based on last year's assessed valuation, we don't know what next year's assessed valuation is going to do, so it could go up or down a little bit on the mills that are affected there. But that would get us to a fully funded LOB at 30%. We have no idea what they're going to do next year when it comes to rewriting the formula. But based on past history, if it repeats itself in a similar fashion, that we would leave money on the table if we didn't fully fund our LOB, that's probably not a situation we would want to be in. So one of the options we're looking at is fully funding the LOB for next year. So that's all the additional revenue line items. The expenses are the same as what we looked at before, they haven't changed at all. Maintaining the salary schedule for certified and classified, that would be an additional $600,000. Differences between last year's budget and next year's budget, we have added two special ed pairs, so we'll need to put those in the budget for next year. And then we also added transportation mechanic during the current school year, so we'll need to add that in the next year's budget as well. And I apologize, I left a line item on there that from a preuse, it's widely looked at. So the total difference there is, I believe it's $480,000 additional funds that we would have, assuming that all of those things happen. It's a guess, nobody knows how the legislature is going to come back and say they want to address this equalization piece, but if this is how they were to address it, we'd be in the old formula, that's how it would look for Garden City. That's it. Questions? Have you learned how to look at this, I mean, for money? I'm still working on that. Is there training? If I can find it, we'll go there.
Okay. I do have a question. If we don't find out till the end of June, what's, how are we going to do this? How long will it take you to re-adjust these figures and these charts, based on what they do?
At this point, assuming that, this case scenario is obviously better than the last one that we've had. And under the last one, we were able to make everything work with maintaining the salary schedule and increasing local taxpayer bill funding. That's kind of the process that I'm moving forward with. Hopefully, what we looked at before is the worst-case scenario, and we're able to make worst-case scenario work, and hopefully we'll get more funding than that. And we will have more options with what we can, what we can do. But this is something that we're constantly looking at, and if we get more information, we're readjusting and trying to go down a different street. So hopefully, we're prepared for whatever comes. But at this point, I don't, I don't think we have information to believe that we won't be able to do the things that we need to do for next year. And in regards to any potential shutdown, we are currently looking and reviewing, you know, how that would affect our employees, how that would affect local taxpayers, having a building shut down, or if they will have an impact on them as well, even though your students aren't in school, if they're using our buildings every day. We have lots of questions about how, what the impact would actually be. And we're generating lists of questions, and we're trying to find answers. And as soon as we know that we're a little bit closer to possibly having that happen, we'll make sure that we communicate with employees and the community of what we do know and what we don't know.
Can you address some of that tonight, or you'd rather not?
Um, I can, I wasn't prepared to.
Or maybe, I spoke to a lady yesterday, and she wanted to know what schools would be closed. She said Garden City wouldn't be closed, I said, yeah, all the schools. So I don't know if people really understand what will take place, you know, I told her, you know, we won't even be able to mow the lawns. And she said, well, people will volunteer to do that. Raise your hand if you're not told to. But, you know, and people need to understand that. You know, what are the possibilities if the schools do close, what, what are we looking at?
We are, we are in the process, like KJ said, of asking and trying to answer a lot of those questions. This would be unprecedented in Kansas for a statewide school shutdown. And I'm doing a little research, but I think it may be unprecedented in the United States, that an entire state system of public schools would be shut down. So, you know, first and foremost, we're hopeful that the governor and the legislator are taking this seriously, and I think indications are that they are. That support being done, and that there will be a special session called to try to avoid a shutdown. But with that said, you know, we're within 30 days of this deadline. So we are preparing for the worst and hoping for the best. And, and that's, our approach to that is to identify what areas will, would be impacted, and what questions does that create. I believe at this point, we have six or eight student family-type programs that would be impacted immediately. Things like our books on the bus, like our Kansas reading roadmap summer school, our summer feeding program. Those are things that if we were shut down the 1st of July, would have to stop and stop functioning at that point. We're also looking at the effect of what a shutdown would mean in our preparation for the start of school next year. A lot of things are going on right now, in order for school to be able to start on August 11th. And so having an interruption in that could certainly have an impact on the start of school. We're also trying to define what we consider to be some essential services, and mowing the yard is one of them. Because the problem, if you don't mow the yard, is the grass goes to seed, and pretty soon the yard's ruined, and you have a big expense to replant the yard when you can go back to aggressive. And so we're, we're really working on a definition of what is essential in terms of service, where there wouldn't be lasting outcomes that would affect our ability to deliver our, our programs in the future. Things that wouldn't cost the district dollars. And then our question for the state department and the experts in Topeka, if a shutdown happens, will be, can we, can we continue with any of those essential services so we don't incur additional costs or, or problems with our services when we, when we're allowed to resume? So there, there's a lot going on. We are, we're working on a webpage that we'll have available with a little letter from me, with some of this information, and kind of a question and answer, a place where patrons can submit questions, and then we'll take those questions and put them on our lists. Some of them may be questions that have to be researched, and if we don't have the answer, some of them may be questions that we know the answers to or, or can give the answers right away. But certainly, our goal here is for school to continue. If there is any interruption, for it to have as minimal of an impact as possible on our students, on our families, and on our employees. But there, there's a lot in play here, and there's a lot that could be disrupted if this happens. You know, one of the things, G P asked KJ, last year, and I don't remember what the timing was, but I know it really kind of could have hurt on KJ's summer meetings, the state department was scrambling to get their budget forms together for KJ to start with the budget, because the legislature took some late action, but that wasn't the case. That was in partray. So there will be a period of time where KJ can be organizing some stuff, but to actually be starting to put information together, surely dependent upon KSDE to get her the right stuff, depending on how different, say, the solution is that comes from Topeka. I don't know how long it would take the state department to put that information in. So there's a lot of things that we're working on, and, you know, I, I do want our, our patrons to know that while we're optimistic that the state will take care of this, I don't think we can leave that to chance. So if people are wondering what they can do to help, they can call their legislators, they can call the governor, and they can let those people know how important it is that schools continue without an interruption, that this is something that's important for us in our communities, and we need to get this solved.
How is this, when does the SPED summer school end? June 23rd? Okay. So that will be in the...
There may be some, I guess, essentialism is the word we want to use, but required services, required under federal law that we would need to provide for SPED. We would have to, again, look at how we can make those provisions happen under a shutdown, but the vast majority of our special ed services, that long with our micro, summer school program, those will be completed.
Any questions, comments? It's just sort of, I have some of that's floating around online, which is part of the board's responsibility to be thoughtful. Because we want, we want with the district, we want to deliver to people. And I, I assume you can keep thinking, trying to figure out what we're going to do.
Well, that's, that's one of the, it's one of the items we have listed under our essential services for operations. Because you are the governing body for the district. You know, if we're able to write checks to pay vendors for electricity or other required services, water, water in the yard, because, you know, I'm going to need to call it, you know, water. But you guys authorize that payment, so, as a board. So, that's what I said, there's a, there's a number of questions that I'm working with my colleagues across the state, with KSDE, with USA, with KASP, and these same questions are being asked everywhere. The guidance is coming up a little bit at a time, but we'll keep looking for them, because we have answers. But gee, that's a great question, that one is one that we'll go on our list, and when we come to KASP, as to their termination, that is, how their advice.
Make sure to tell them that question, you just signed that resolution, the elections are going to take place in January instead of, the election will be in November. So, January, so are we changing officers in July, or are we going to wait until January? Because it's usually connected, we want the new board members to be part of the election process of the officers, that's why it happened happening. So something to think about, because whose, whose reading or group is going to be Mary Portman, I think, over this next year. Not to scare anybody away from me, but I'm not done, so it's not going to be me. I assume there's definitely something, because it does, well, because... Apparently, that's, that's something that's not out yet.
I would assume that somehow the reorganization process will move to January, instead of July, or it's going to follow school year, and I don't know.
So are we having elections next month? Okay, so we are, so it will be a short term, not a extension for the current term.
Yeah, you'll have a whole other year there.
Okay.
But there will, there will come a point in those switch that you're either going to have to have officers for a year and a half, or you're going to have to have six months.
Yeah, I'm just a year off, yeah. But still, since we're concentrating on trying to just make that more quick. There's a lot of these things or questions that do a bit of other changes. Lots of money, water, but I just want to make sure that he's on his toes on, on the passing of the guitar and that's something. For when I understood the legislators, when they broke for recess or whatever, vacation, they were at the brainstorming level of what to do with this process. Every day, you know, what are you going to do? I don't know, we're taking suggestions. Like, to be at the brainstorming level at this point in the game is so scary. So I don't know if that was, who would tell me?
So, I don't know if that was for television, or if that's really where they're at.
We may have covered this already, but again, what is the authority of the courts to shut off this board, or even this board from operating schools? Is it because we don't have assurance that we got to have the funding from the state side of it, and so therefore, we can't even, even issuing our school year because we have option, we'll be able to operate with the funds we have until different funds come? It's a threat to the court, to the legislature, to bar all school districts from functioning as far as, well, functioning? Is that, is that what that is? Because I don't think we've received the correspondence. Is that what?
No, and I, and the way things stand out, I think we need to be in the direction of an additional order from the court. What the courts basically said is if, if the legislature hasn't adopted a constitutional method to fund schools after June thirtieth, the system that is in place now cannot longer be used. So, there's going to have to be some interpretation. So, does that mean we get no extra money from the state? Does that mean we spend the dollars that we have in reserves and in paying? And understanding that the crux of this decision was on equity. The two parts equity and adequacy, all the court has really looked at, so the Supreme Court, the lower court bound, that both of those are unconstitutional, and the Supreme Court has just functioned on, on equity. And when you think about, there's some districts that have an awful lot in order that might be able to operate for ninety days or sixty days. KJ's in the process of looking at that from our standpoint. Our, our balances have always been appropriate, but conservative. And again, keep the money in the local taxpayer's hands, not putting money in our balances. We've never had a problem being able to run the district with the balances that we have, but our balances won't last as long as some other districts. So, will the court see that as an equity issue and not allow people to spend those dollars? All those are those kind of questions that we don't know, that it's going to take intervention and guidance from others in Topeka. Those are the kind of things we're trying to find out right now.
It's a fundamental question. If you're, under the laws of Kansas, you're elected to run school this year, and you have some means to do that, but court is saying that it's not equitable what you're receiving, the standpoint of constitutionality in Topeka. But, it, it's just an interesting concept to deny the ability that is there, to the extent it's there, to provide education. Doesn't that, doesn't that exacerbate the problem rather than fix the problem?
Well, this has been going on since two thousand ten. I mean, this isn't new, this isn't the first time that the legislature's had an opportunity to address this issue and correct it. And I think one, one of the things that KJ demonstrated to you and I is if, if places just went out on their own and did their own thing, kids in Garden City would be at a distinct disadvantage over any of our neighbors because of the dollars that those communities would have to spend on education. So, fundamentally, the court is saying, education is a state function as defined in our constitution, and thereby, there is a state system to ensure an equitable level of education across all communities. So, it doesn't matter where you live, students are entitled to the same basic, the opportunity for a similar, similar educational opportunities. If, if places had to go up and fund themselves, do their own thing, I don't know that, that that fits in that model, but that's for the court to decide.
Oh, yeah. I'm just talking about from a legal standpoint, if we're not served notice that we can't operate after the end of this month, um, I mean, I just, where does that leave us as far as our responsibilities as a body?
But, I think, to a certain extent, I mean, the reason why we are still operating right now is because there was a stay on the order issued by the three-judge panel in Shawnee County. So, I mean, that order has been in place, it's just been stayed, trying to get the legislature to do what they're supposed to do.
So, we have a standing order against us right now?
Which has been stayed, is my understanding. I mean, that's what took, went up to the Supreme Court, was that the state appealed the orders of the three-panel judge, and the court issued, the Supreme Court issued a stay on those orders to allow the legislature to find some money and appropriately fund education, which they haven't done yet.
Well, I'm just curious, and I apologize for the extended dialogue, but fundamentally here, we've got a short period of time in which we could have pretty dramatic changes, and it's all based on an order that's already been issued, the stay. I haven't seen the order. Maybe I need to Google the order, just so I have a better sense of what is pending against us.
Well, and, and we'll work with the court's legal counsel to make sure that we follow the law in, in whatever capacity, because none of us are above the law. We've got to follow what the law is. Now, obviously, we want to continue to provide services to our kids, but we have to follow what the law is and what the constitution tells us of the state.
And thus, we have less than thirty days or something, and I'm kind of wondering what that is.
Right. And that's, and again, Mark, I think that's where that comes back, because this is unprecedented. I don't think there's enough information out there right now to really know exactly what it would look like. I think there's going to have to be more guidance in the form, probably, of another order from the court come down to say, "This is what this would look like." But, in principle, the idea is that the current system is not constitutional, and if there's not a constitutional system put in place by June thirtieth, then starting July one, there is no constitutional system.
There's no system.
To fund schools. Thereby, schools can't continue to operate. So, what exactly does that mean? Does that mean we can't spend any additional money? Does that mean we can spend the dollars that we had covered out of last year's budget? Does that mean we can spend the reserves that we have to provide our essential services? And, of course, all this could be corrected if a constitutional system is in place before July first and, 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 but, and we can't wait to answer those questions until the eve of, the eve of thirtieth.
So, the next board meeting, maybe we could have a presentation of what is pending against us?
Sure, we may need to have a special meeting, because your next meeting is scheduled as, at the end of the year, meeting on June thirtieth.
But, it's not just whether or not there's a constitutionally approved system in place, it has to be funded too. And with the numbers that came back this last time from the state revenue, like, was it seventy-six million dollars? That was a shortfall? So, how are they going to, I mean, their, their revenue projections are already falling short of what they're supposed to, and yet, they have to have not only a system in place that's constitutionally acceptable, they have to have money to, to do it.
It just is wild, you know? And this is just a commentary, and I appreciate that, thank you for saying that. It helps me. It's wild to think that, well, if you're not educating kids in a constitutional manner, so nobody educates kids.